I'm going to call to order this meeting of Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, March 27th, 2024, and all three commissioners are present in the NatU Hill Room. And we'll begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Jones.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. We will now move on to our department updates, and we will begin with the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning. Just a few updates for you today. In Monroe County, emergency room visits and COVID cases have decreased. There have been no changes in wastewater concentrations since March 19th. Flu activity in Indiana has lessened to a moderate level. Our public health clinic still has vaccines available for all ages. You can call 812-353-3244 for more information. And we are sharing on the screen information about our community health needs assessment. So we do have dates coming up for community conversations on April 3rd and on April 4th, and we are looking at creating a virtual meeting on April 26th that is not yet on this flyer, but this flyer will be updated and added to our website either later today or tomorrow.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
Yes, I understand that there's, there is now recommendation out for at least older folks maybe to get a second COVID booster. Is that correct? And if so, does the health clinic have those?
We do have the updated boosters. You should check the CDC website, or individuals should check with their physicians. There are some conditions looking at just immune status and what prior vaccinations have been given to determine if an additional dose is appropriate.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the information on the health needs assessment. This is an important part of planning for the future for our Health Department and for our community, so I encourage people to join and attend wherever they can. Next up, we have John Batton from GIS, who's going to talk to us about the ongoing broadband challenge.
Yep. I guess just an update on the Monroe County broadband challenge. This went live, I guess, a week and a half ago or something like that. Press release went out. It was covered in the Herald Times. Very little kind of publicizing beyond that, but we have, I posted it on a social media, on Facebook through the Monroe County GIS Facebook page, and then on Reddit through the Monroe County GIS Reddit page as well. We've had 55 survey submissions so far for folks that are eligible challengers. Of those 55, we've been able to submit two for challenges as of last week. I'm doing data, what I call a data dump, every Friday, meaning we're basically downloading all the data and then sending that in, and also kind of going through the data and seeing which of the challenges are actually at the threshold, which makes them an eligible challenger. So this coming Friday, it looks like we're going to have, I'm hoping around 75 more kind of entries to kind of go through and submit. The issues we've ran into with the responses is individuals doing kind of tests back-to-back-to-back on the same day, which invalidates kind of the attempts. You have to do it on sequential days, so either Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, et cetera. I have tried to reach out to the folks who had eligible challenges that did it in those kind of three tests in a row. I've heard back from one or two of them. Since then, I've added an email address to the survey as well. That probably should have been added off the bat. But again, it's more data entry often leads to less responses. So, but it seems like so far, everybody has been turning in their email address as well. Out of the more recent survey responses we've gotten, it does seem like more of them are eligible challengers, which is pretty cool. The process of submitting these challenges, I've only done two so far, it's as kind of convoluted and confusing as the challenge itself. And so each challenge is not against the FCC, the challenge is against the internet provider. And so we have challenges against AT&amp;T, against Comcast, against Smithville, et cetera. So I do think the next commissioners' meeting will have a lot more updates in terms of numbers and things like that. It's been a very interesting process of kind of massive data collection, crowdsourced data collection, and I'm very hopeful with the kind of mailing of the postcards and things like that, we're going to be getting a lot more responses. I will say one more thing is that our GIS technician has developed, and I mentioned this last week as well, a, essentially a script or a code that takes each of the attachments that the challengers submit, so three screenshots of speed tests plus an internet bill, and has devised a way that those are downloaded with a prefix of the challenger's unique ID. And so when I get these all as a package in a folder, which could be like 5,000 documents, these you can sort by that ID, and then they can also be submitted to the Indiana Broadband, Indiana Broadband Office in a way that is, I guess, a little bit easier to go through. So, huzzah for that.
That's great news. Let's see if comments or questions from Commissioner Jones.
A big, big thing. Can you tell me when the postcards will be going out? Is that something you know anything about?
I do not. I know that there was communication with the postcard company, and I believe that the last, there was an email like on Friday. I think Commissioner Thomas probably has more online of that.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe they're going to be out this week. I guess, have you thought about posting things on like Nextdoor also?
That's a good, other source that would help. I'll look into that today. I'm trying to think of other, I guess, other things would be like, you know, the Monroe County Commissioners page on Facebook to share it as well, and other departments too. Just trying to get as much word out.
Right there.
Yeah. The challenge here is getting people to participate in the challenge, getting people to go through the entire three test stages, and then also getting folks to actually, you know, follow the directions of doing screenshots of the speed tests and submitting all the data. Those are kind of the big, the big challenges, right, of the challenge? So, yeah. That's a great, great other outlet though.
Yeah. I think, yeah, it is already on our Facebook as well, but yes, everything we could do to get the word out, the better, because this is our one opportunity to access those federal dollars for broadband. And folks may get an email from their provider like I did that said, "Congratulations, we're increasing your speed at no charge to you," because they've obviously been throttling the speed to my house. So that was kind of interesting when I got that email. I really appreciate your hard work, the work of your colleagues at GIS Office, and Tron and Wright Randolph for giving you the space and the time to do this. It's a short project, and you put out an amazing tutorial video, so anybody that's thinking, "What is this?", they could follow it, and it's really, really well done. I can't thank you enough. This is something that I brought to you and said, "Could you help?", and you've just done way more than anybody could have asked. So thank you so much for this. Yeah, so postcards will be going out soon. We do have information distributed around the county at various locations like township offices, et cetera. But if you are somebody the FCC has identified as having internet and having sufficient speed, you will be receiving a postcard very soon with the same information on it. But in the meantime, folks can go to co-monroe.in.us forward slash broadband to see all of the information, the tutorial, the FCC map, anything that they might need. And we only have until April 14th. So time is short, but, but it's doable. So appreciate your, your work. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And one last plug too for Monroe County Surveyors Office and GIS Division. It does seem like we are, for my communication with other GIS coordinators across the state, one of the only counties that's actually doing this. Some of the larger counties actually contracted out to different kind of private individuals to do this, and their, their products seem to be less developed than what we've done. So, so a little wrong.
Not surprised. Not surprised at all.
So, thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you so much. It's one of the things that we do every day to... Make things happen. It's, it's just, we don't really often think about contracting things out if we can do it ourselves, but awesome work. Thank you. And I would also like to take a second to thank Area 10's, Area 10 on Aging's volunteers who are helping, they're going to be helping folks who have questions, who call into the phone number for assistance. And Eliza Braider at the City of Bloomington is going to be addressing questions from city residents. So really appreciate those folks for stepping in and helping out as well. All right. And we also have an update from our Emergency Management. Ms. Nevel? Let's talk Eclipse.
Hi, Jamie Nevel, Director of Emergency Management. Our department update is going to be about the eclipse, because that's where we've been quite heavily recently. We've actually been meeting about the eclipse for over a year now. So, yeah, since February of 2023. We've been meeting with our partners from the DNR, various public safety agencies, healthcare, local businesses, organizations, and even our nearby counties. The weather so far, long-term weather outlook is sunny and 60s. So, good news for our visitors. Our EOC, Emergency Operations Center, will be active and open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on April 8th at a Level 3. We'll be doing monitoring and situational briefings for our partners. We'll have the Fire, Health, Public Safety, and PIO ESFs on that day. So just a little bit about what to expect for our local residents. The week and weekend leading up to, you'll see probably more visitors starting to trickle in. The weekend will probably look like an Ohio State game weekend, but the difference that you'll notice is that it will be evident in all portions of the county. So it'll be an Ohio State game weekend, except instead of being concentrated to downtown, you'll probably see that all over the county. Ahead of that weekend, you probably want to do the things that you don't want to wait for, the things that you don't want to spend time waiting in line for, like grocery shopping or getting prescriptions filled or fuel stops. You can expect to wait for your favorite restaurants and things like that. There will also be minimal traffic congestions that go along with that. Now, as Monday approaches, those traffic congestions will get more and more. The day of, my outlook on that is your best view will be from your backyard. But of course, there will be lots of fun things happening all over the county, so just be prepared and pack your patience. Traffic is going to be the big theme, traffic, traffic, and more traffic. It is going to take extra time to get to all the places. Cellular and internet slowness may be an issue. Sorry.
Oh, that's the day that they should do the tests?
That's right. Line to make those phone calls, or texting, just to kind of save the cellular bandwidth. Have cash for transactions just in case, just in case. In speaking to the local businesses, they have a backup system that some of them can use for those card transactions, but you know, it, it just depends on the place of business. So 911 won't be affected. They're operating on a higher priority level, so those 911 calls and texts will still go through. But please reserve 911 for the true emergencies. Don't call for traffic updates, please. If you have appointments or work shifts on that day, on April 8th, please leave early, because it's going to take some time to get there. Same with leaving for, leaving from work and going to home. It's going to take you some time to get there. So if you have daycare pickups and things like that, be mindful of those. Biggest theme for the day is patience. I know I've said it once, and I'll say it 1,000 times more, an influx of visitors of this magnitude is going to put a strain on all of the things that we use on a daily basis. So just, you know, remember that. And it's not just us, it's not just Monroe County, it's not just Bloomington, it's not just Ellisville. It's a good swath of the state of Indiana and a good swath of the Midwest of the United States. So it's far-reaching and longer-lasting. That's why the traffic impacts will take quite a bit of time. If you're visiting our wonderful county, stay a little longer. Maybe leave on Tuesday instead of Monday. You know, try to, you know, take extra, extra time. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Nevel. Can you, can you explain what a PIO ESF is?
Thank you.
That's all right.
PIO is Public Information Officer. So my deputy, Justin Baker, is going to serve as our PIO officer, and he's going to provide regular briefings. We're actually having all of the various PIO officers from different entities collaborating on those messaging, so that we can all get the same concise messaging, so that, you know, everybody is putting out the same messaging, and we're not missing anything.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes. Will, will there, when you put out those messages, will it include information about traffic so that people can maybe figure out when it is possible to get out and move around?
Yes. So part of our monitoring system is going to be keeping an eye on the traffic and making sure that, you know, like if there is a traffic accident, we want to make sure that we're putting that out so that, you know, people can be aware. It'll be hard to avoid the area, because it's just going to be hard to avoid traffic accidents, but at least people will know, and they won't be sitting there, you know, saying, "Why am I not moving?". I mean, obviously, it's slow-going, and we know that, but if it's at an absolute standstill, at least they will know why. Sometimes there's a little comfort in knowing the why behind why you're just sitting there. We're also partnering with IU to have an extra alert system, an opt-in alert system, so that when the visitors come, they can opt into an alert system instead of having to use our county alert system. We'll be putting the same messaging out in both alert systems, so if you're already using Monroe County alerts, you won't have to opt into this, you'll get the same messaging. But it's just, the opt-in one will only be valid from the 5th through the 10th, and then those will fall out on the 10th.
Thank you.
Commissioner Githens?
I really appreciate the fact that both you and Mr. Baker have been calling around to other places who have experienced this before to really help local folks get ready for this. It's been pretty amazing. And I, my colleagues aren't aware of this, but I had heard from a constituent recently about emergency planning, the things that you do and all the tabletop exercises. And it was very reassuring to this constituent that you guys, you prepare, you don't just react. And so we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
For sure. And I was actually going to ask you about the emergency alert system. So good, good on you. That's smart. Smart idea, just a temporary access point. That'll be great, and I hope our residents will also join that as well. And I had a conversation yesterday with Chief Deputy Parker, and he said, you know, as you did, that we kind of expect people to trickle in over the weekend, so that busyness will be apparent days before, but the, the real issue is going to be right after. And if everybody tries to leave at once, and then Indianapolis is also in the, in that range of totality, that they're also going to be, that highway system is going to be very full as well. So it's not just, oh, get out of Bloomington, everything will be fine. It's going to be quite an event to get wherever you're getting. So, yeah. I appreciate all the suggestions and the insight and all the hard work that's gone into it and hasn't even happened yet, and I'm sure we're all looking forward to a very safe time for everybody who visits and everybody who lives here. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas? Are you wearing your...
I am wearing my t-shirt.
I just realized.
I am. Celebrating early. Good, good. All right. So any other department updates? Next on our agenda is public comment. This is for items that are not on our agenda, and we ask folks to limit their commentary to three minutes. Please state your name and your county of residence. You can raise your hand on teams, or you may come to the podium, as Mr. MG from the chamber is doing right now. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam President, Commissioners, distinguished staff. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Great to be here in person at the NatU Hill Room, but I'd like to chew on on those updates. I just want to give a shout-out and kudos to Kirk White of IU and Mike McAfee of Visit Bloomington. We've been meeting with different committees for over a year on the eclipse and the planning involved and the updates, making sure we have all of our Ts crossed and Is dotted on this. You can never plan for the unexpected, but we have done the best we can on this, and I'm, I think we're, I think we're prepared. So I'm going in with complete confidence on it. And then kind of to echo John's comments, and then I know Commissioner Thomas spoke at the council meeting last night about the broadband test, the broadband challenge, the chamber's pushing that out, and I'll probably mention that again, at the city council meeting. And, I mean, it's about federal dollars. Fiber infrastructure is terribly expensive. So this is, this is a big deal, and it just makes economically us a more viable community when we have the speeds necessary to do the business. Then I'm going to just do a couple chamber event plugs, some housekeeping. Appreciate the chambers, or the commissioners' response to our April 3rd, that's next week, Business of Local Government at the Convention Center. That's going to be a luncheon, a unique opportunity for attendees to gain insight directly from the new mayor about the cityscape and what the future holds and what she's learned in the three months she's been in office. It's further wrenched by a Q&amp;A moderated by former Fort Wayne Mayor Paul Helmke. As you know, city-county relations are very important to us. We did some criminal justice conversations last year. We're kind of talking with the mayor this year. So having those, having your participation in it as attendees does mean a lot to us. We do appreciate that. Next up, we have the Chamber's Elect Connect. That's Tuesday, April 16th, for an evening event that allows our members and the community, it's a community event, to hear from candidates on the ballot and elected officials at Upland Woodshop from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. The event will provide necessary information for the upcoming election. We'll have some hors d'oeuvres there, and we do sponsor the Illegal Women Voters Forums, but this is not a forum, this is a little bit more of an open house. Candidates will be talking, get a couple questions here and there, but we want to make it interactive with the community, interactive with the voters. And then finally, mark your calendars for Wednesday, May 8th. It's a luncheon at the Monroe County Convention Center. We'll be doing this with the Northside Exchange Club of Bloomington. This will be our debut Valor Awards, a prestigious ceremony dedicated to honoring our brave first responders, firefighters, law enforcement, dispatch, and community correction officers. The event will spotlight their courage and selflessness of these everyday heroes. It's presented by Old National and the Weddell Brothers, so just mark that on your calendar. I'm sure you'll hear more from that. But always appreciative of the time you give me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It sounds like a great event. Does anybody else have any public comment to offer for items not on our agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to our next item, please.
Yes, I move approval of the minutes from March 13th, 2024.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits?
No.
Nope.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from March 13th, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable March 27th, 2024, and payroll March 22nd, 2024.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Gregory, tell us all about it, please.
Good morning, Commissioner. Docket for March 27th totals $11,554,650.67. That includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The March 22nd, 2024 payroll docket includes $1,477,432.85 in direct costs and the remaining $629,470.42 for indirect costs for a grand total of $2,106,903.27.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I do want to comment that the, a lot of the claims are transfer of taxes from one entity, from Monroe County to other entities, but also, one of the claims that was in there was for ambulances for the Fire Protection District, and I was really excited to see that. Can you tell us what all that covered? I couldn't tell exactly just that it was for the ambulances, but I'm so tickled that they're going to be out there.
Yes, I believe, and I'm going to have to do a little bit more research, but I believe this covered just the, the next order. For a while, it was just difficult to get vehicles in general, so they've kind of had to, it was slow-going. It was moving. Yes. It's piece by piece, I believe.
It is. It is indeed. We got the tires. But it was, it was encouraging to see something. Yeah. They are moving forward, but there, there is more work to do because they have to equip, and, and then they'll be ready. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Appreciate everyone's hard work on all of this, and let's see if there's any public comment on this. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in NatU Hill. Let's see, none. All those in favor of approving the claims docket, accounts payable March 27th, 2024, and payroll from March 22nd, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. I will note for the record, we have received reports from the Clerk of the Circuit Court, that is from February 2024, and from the Treasurer as well, also from February 2024. And with that, we will move on to new business, please.
Yes, I move approval of contract with Indus International. This is an agreement renewal, fund name County General, fund number 1,000, in an amount of $3,250.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Mark Brown joining us. Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. And let me be the first to wish you a happy Easter, since we have such a short weekend. We'll wrap up with Easter this weekend. So we have a large book scanner in the Clerk's office that helps us to, we keep some records in perpetuity, and some of those older records are with those big books that date back nearly to the founding of the state. That book scanner has to be serviced and maintained, and so this is the annual agreement with the company that you have signed in the past. The county attorney has reviewed it, made revisions that were acceptable to the vendor, and so it just awaits your signature. And that is all for my presentation. And that is all for my presentation.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Githens?
So this is, is my.
$250 per year, right?
Yes.
And, and it's for three years, is that correct?
Until the end of my term.
Okay. So, yeah. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you.
On this item, raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, a call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Indus International Inc. Agreement Renewal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you. All right. Next item, please.
Move approval of the National Association of County and City Health Officials, also known as NACHO, grant, fund name and fund number to be determined in an amount of $5,000.
Second?
We have a motion and we have.
Good morning, Commissioners. So this is just a small $5,000 grant that is to help the Health Department build their Medical Reserve Corps volunteer base back up. Some of the funding will be used for training for our MRC coordinator with additional funding for printing and supplies.
Yes. Has something happened that has caused the Reserve Corps to be depleted, or?
I think it's just a transition from COVID and now just trying to reengage the volunteers. So the hope is to be able to establish routine events that the volunteers can feel engaged with, with typical, just other community events that the Health Department has, just to keep them actively involved.
Thank you. That's a relief to know.
Commissioner Githens?
I, I do want to thank those that were involved, especially during COVID, because the Medical Reserve Corps.
Or really did step up and made a huge difference during the time that they were doing vaccinations especially.
Yeah, that's when, actually, when I joined the Reserve Corps.
I did too.
I did too. Yeah. So I still hope to be an active member, and I think having regular events is a, is a wonderful idea. I think that will help keep us engaged and connected with one another, too. So I think this is great, and it's wonderful that you got this grant, so thank you for pursuing it. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the National Association of County and City Health Officials Grant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the wastewater surveillance expansion with Indiana University. Fund name Local Public Health Services, fund number 1161, in an amount of $20,000.
Second?
We have a motion and.
Yeah. Have a second. Ms. Kelly, tell us about this one, please.
Sure. So this is just an expansion with our current wastewater testing. So the same samples that are already being collected will be used for this additional testing. This just helps to better align with our core service requirement for trauma and injury prevention, our suicide overdose fatality review team, to be able to better understand the substances of greater focus in the community.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
Yes, I was talking with people from the Indiana Recovery Alliance yesterday who feel that this is not the right way to go, and part of it was is that people will dump illicit substances down the toilet, and so it's not a measure necessarily of what's in the wastewater. It's, and it could be that somebody one day dumps something and it shows up as a spike, and it's not truly a spike in terms of what, what's going on in the community. So the, the feeling from this particular individual was that this is not a good measure of what's going on. Could you address some of that?
Sure. So I would talk with Dr. Justin Greaves for more information, but do you mean in reference to just substances in general or the level of those substances? So maybe that we would get false information about the substances that are actually being in use and contributing to the overdoses?
This is not necessarily reflective of the illicit drugs that are going into people's bodies, I guess is the best way for me to describe this, because we don't know. If somebody gets a, say, a bad batch of stuff, they use it once, they dump the rest of it down the drain.
Uh huh. A lot of this is still research-based in trying to understand what's being represented in the community and what's being represented in the overdoses that we're seeing that we get, like, from the coroners.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I, I think this is going to lead to some very interesting information. I, I am wondering if it could end up making certain parts of the community feel targeted.
And I do think that that, I share that opinion, and this is information that would want to be just kept strictly within the Health Department, that health officials are being able to use about areas to focus on prevention and education in the community, but to keep that information private, for sure.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
That's, I think that's a great idea, and I would, I would also add that some of these are substances that are prescribed as well, and, and so obviously that has to be taken into consideration. But I hope that, I think it's worth trying this. I, I understand the, the concerns, but I think it may be worth trying this to see if this provides any insight that, that may be helpful for our Health Department. And that could be reported generally, that it was helpful or that it wasn't. So, excellence. Thank you. And let's see if there's any, I'm sorry.
One more question, if I could. How often will these samples be taken? I didn't.
I would have to look on this, but it's just when they're already collecting them and doing the testing for the influenza and for COVID, so whatever that same schedule is.
Great. Ms. Purdy?
Yes. Two clarifying points. One, you're not supposed to flush your narcotics down the drains.
But people do. But people do.
I understand they do, but I don't have, just want to make sure that everybody understands you're not supposed to do that. And then, second of all, I just want to ensure that the invoicing for this is going to be separated from the current invoicing, because the current process is an ARPA-approved fund and project, and this is adding to that, but it's clearly not being paid out of the same funds. So we're going to want to make sure that our invoicing is separated. Okay. That's all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Yeah, I appreciate the clarification, too. I just, you know, kind of know not to do that, but people don't know that, so it's, I'm glad you raised that. Thank you. All right. Let's see if there's any public comments. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. All right. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of the wastewater surveillance expansion with Indiana University signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose it. Yes.
Okay. So the motion carries two to one. Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Yes. Yes. There.
Move approval of the Indot Change Order Number Eight, Sample Road Phase One, Fund Name, Sample Road Phase One, Fund Number 8161, in a return of funds of $391,089.93.
Second?
We, we have a motion and we have a second.
Ms. Ridge, tell us all about this.
Some of the changes were due to HMA quantity change, some borrow changes. We had a shortened stormwater management plan due to the timeline and below-average precipitation, but everything was followed, all the plans were followed. We still have a couple more issues to work out, maybe a couple more change orders to come forward, but this one, but yeah, definitely was in the negative.
Which is, which is a positive.
I said a return of.
A return of, right. Gotcha. All right. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it, it will be rather exciting to finally see the end of this project, which has gone on since when?
For this project was 2014, so 10 years ago.
All right. Commissioner Githens, comments, questions?
No, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Indot Change Order Number Eight for Sample Road Phase One signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. All right. Next item.
Move approval of the Cutters Memorandum of Understanding for the Capital Turf Replacement.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, and my mic will not work, and Mr. Robertson from Parks, please tell us about it. Thank you.
I'd like to share it, by the way. John Robertson with the Parks Department. We also have Louis Malone here with us today. Louis is the Executive Director of Cutter Soccer Club. I believe everybody's quite familiar with Louis. So this MOU is a product of the Cutters Annual Field Rental Agreement, as well as the upcoming Artificial Turf Installation Project at Karst Farm Park. In addition to their annual rental fee, Cutters has agreed to contribute $20,000 per year to the future replacement of the artificial turf. This $20,000 will be coupled with a $30,000 contribution from Monroe County Parks and Recreation for a total of $50,000 per year designated to the replacement of the artificial turf. 10 to 12 years, we're hoping for 12, but more likely to be 10. You'll note that this agreement expires in June of 2028. That date coincides with the expiration date of the Cutters' current field rental agreement. Our intention at that time is to combine the two agreements. We should have a better idea then, too, of how much use Cutters is getting out of the artificial turf, as well as the demand for the artificial turf from other user groups in the community and regionally. Our department is encouraged by Cutters' contribution. We feel it represents a long-term commitment to the use of the athletic complex, and it promotes a positive partnership moving forward. Got anything else to add? Okay. Any questions?
All right. Comments or?
Questions? Commissioner Githens?
I was at the meetings where this has been discussed, and I've recently learned about the passion that Mr. Malone has for soccer and youth soccer in particular, and so it's greatly appreciated, all that you're doing in the community.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the fact that Cutters is stepping up like this to help something that will help with something that will actually benefit the entire community.
Yeah, I agree, and it's great to have Mr. Malone here. Thank you so much for being here and the work that you do. So this is very exciting and something that we thought was going to happen and has happened, so kudos. Let's see if there's any public comment on this. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Cutters' MOU Capital Turf Replacement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Bloods, O'Rigger, Cooper, James, Jackson Creek Park Survey. Fund number County General and Parks Non-Reverting. Fund numbers 1,000, 1178, and 1179, in an amount of $3,800.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Robertson?
Yes. This agreement with Bloods, O'Rigger, Cooper, and James is to perform and file a survey boundary of Jackson Creek Park and the Windinbrook Home Edition, so the western boundary of the park. Bloods will be responsible for all registered and certified mailings required prior to the survey, as well as those required after filing, in an amount not to exceed $3,800. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
No, and I've been attending the meetings, so.
They fall in. Yes. Yeah.
Absolutely. This is something that we'd also heard about previously.
And we knew that this, this contract was coming, so I'm glad to see this also come to fruition. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Bloods, O'Rigger, Cooper, James, Jackson Creek Park Survey signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Next item.
Move approval of Karst Farm Greenway MCCSC easement vacation and new easement.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Robertson?
So MCCSC. Track at Highland Park Elementary School. The location of the new track will require relocation of a small section of the Karst Farm Greenway. As such, MCCSC is requesting that the Board of Commissioners accept to vacate the current easement that the trail is on, which I think was provided in an attachment, and accept the new described easement, which is also provided in the attachment. MCCSC will pay for all costs associated with the project, engineering, construction. Our departments looked at the plan, our Board of Directors have, legal has as well. We all agree that it's beneficial for all parties involved.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Githens?
I just want to share with the public that part of what's going on at the school is that they're putting in an exercise track for the students, and then they're also putting in a driveway that'll make it easier for drop-off and pickup and safer for everybody. So I think this is a really good move.
It's a great idea. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm glad we're collaborating with them in this way. I think it, it is a win-win, and, and we also have that, in that area, we also have the Westgate Development going in, so all of this will, I think, work together very well. So I appreciate the, the work on this and that you worked with them so well. Comments or questions from the public? Please raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Karst Farm Greenway MCCSC easement vacation and new easement assessment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of Laura Fur Consulting Memorandum of Understanding. Fund name JDAI Performance Bonus Grant. Fund number 9146, in an amount not to exceed $10,000.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. McAfee joining us. Good morning. Ooh, you are muted.
There we go. Is that better?
Got it.
You can actually hear what I'm saying now? Yes. Well, good morning. I was thinking before I was presenting this morning, I know you guys didn't meet last week, but I think this is my third consecutive meeting. I don't think I'm going to be here next week, so I just wanted to tell you I'm going to miss you this time next week. This is an MOU with Laura Fur. You might remember, we've been doing some work with her through the JDAI process, working on youth and family engagement, and this is going to wrap up our partnership with her. She's going to be in town probably in. She's going to be in town probably in May, do kind of a final event. We have some survey information that we'll share with the community on our... I think I talked about this the last time I was there, our partnership with Indiana University, getting feedback from kids and families about what is it that we're doing well and what is it that we should do more of. And Laura has been instrumental in guiding our process.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is a program that I think is particularly beneficial to the community. The work with families really kind of drills down to where problems initiate frequently and frequently helps a lot to sort things out. I'm very pleased that you all are continuing with this.
Commissioner Githens?
I'm really happy, too, that this kind of program exists because it keeps youth...
...from engaging with our criminal justice system.
Yeah, it's a great, great program. I'm glad that this is another good use of that bonus grant, so excellent, excellent work. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Either raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Laura Fur consulting MOU signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero. Next item, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move approval of Soft Choice Microsoft licensing renewal. Fund name cumulative capital. Fund number 1138 in an amount of $208,579.75.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Mr. Crowe joining us. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Sorry, first of all, I apologize. ...phones this morning. My staff's working on that now to try to find the root cause of this issue. Once again, it's time for our Microsoft licensing renewals. This covers all of our Office 365, as well as our email server, our Visio licenses, our SQL servers, and remote desktop server licensing. This covers a period of one year. There was a 10% increase over last year's cost. That's pretty well standard across the board for all software manufacturers. However, we recently, since we've taken on Teams, have discontinued our Zoom license, which was to be renewed this month. We'll also be discontinuing our Dropbox license, which is due in August. So at least for this year's budget, we've offset the almost $20,000 increase with a $25,000 cut in those other two softwares.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill.
Safe Place Program. Fund name Safe Place Grant. Fund number 9103 in an amount of $200.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Robertson, good morning.
Good morning, how are you guys? Kids in Owen County and help us fulfill our runaway homeless grant agreement.
Right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't, thank you.
Commissioner Githens?
Just thank you.
Yeah, it'll be great to do the fair circuit, and it kind of makes me think of summer, which is also a wonderful feeling on this cold day. All right, let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Owen County Fairbooth Rental for Youth Services Bureau Safe Place Program, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero. Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Move ratification of ordinance 2024-04 Whaley PUD Outline Plan Amendment Number Two.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Let's see if we have... Oh, there he is, Mr. Smith, the Teams. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sorry, it's a little hard to hear on your guys' end, so can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, perfect. So this is the ratification of ordinance 2024-04. Let me share my screen. Okay, so this, like I said, is to ratify condition number six, which was added to ordinance 2024-04A, and that states storage shall be limited to the areas shown on Exhibit A and shall be limited to the types of materials listed for each of the areas on the attached Exhibit B. So for the purposes of this presentation, Exhibit A refers to the staff report, Exhibit B refers to the site plan provided for condition number six, which is after the staff report, and then Exhibit C refers to the email correspondence between planning staff and the MS4 coordinator. So I will skip to the Exhibit B that we've got here. Let my laptop load. Okay, so the biggest changes to this site plan, so we have a solid line here that states permitted areas for future development per ordinance 9813. That was the previous outline plan, and Bynum Fanyo has this listed out here. We had them actually buffer the existing sinkholes an additional 25 feet to equal 50 feet due to the size of those sinkholes, and also to provide some more protection for the areas, so you keep things out of it, an additional 25 feet. If I can zoom in here, I can kind of show you a little bit more detail what that looks like. Let my computer catch up here. But when this loads... Okay, so if you can see my cursor on the screen, they've got delineated a 25-foot permanent vegetative buffer, and this dashed line here, this kind of illustrates that there is to be no disturbance, no storage of any kind beyond this dashed line. So this pretty much encompasses the sinkholes on the property. This is Sinkhole A, and then Sinkhole B up here. Also, we've included the existing Sinkhole C as well. And then they've just got some descriptions about what's to be stored here, et cetera. We kind of covered this at the last meeting, but rather than continue on with Exhibit C, which is just the staff correspondence, instead of reading it word for word, I was hoping... I believe the MS4 coordinator, Kelsey Thetonia, is online, and she can better explain more in depth what she's looking for when we get to the development plan stage.
All right. Thank you so much. Let's see if there is any comment first or questions for Ms. Thetonia, who is in the room here. Commissioner Githens?
It's not a question, it's that I appreciate the fact that this is being... That we're getting more of a buffer with this.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I agree completely with Commissioner.
This was an unfortunate situation, and I think this is a good solution for it.
Ms. Thetonia, did you have anything you wanted to add from the stormwater world?
No, I don't have anything to add. I know that the Drainage Board has discussed water quality concerns in general around sinkholes, so providing a vegetative buffer will definitely provide some water quality benefits for the protection of these sensitive areas. So I'm happy to answer any other questions if you have.
What kind of... What... Oh, these mics again. What kind of...
Of enforcement will there be, and how quickly can we expect some of this vegetative buffer to be in there?
Well, I haven't discussed a timeline with the Planning Department yet, so I would defer to Sean to discuss that.
Did you want to comment on inspections? Mr. Smith?
So, once we are finished with the ordinance, we would immediately have them file for a development plan, and part of that development plan would include resolving some of the enforcement that goes into that. So everything is kind of caught under that development plan, but of course, once this becomes, you know, official, we would begin with the remediation process, which is removing the storage that is currently there on Sinkhole A and Sinkhole B. We would follow up with the petitioner and work with them closely. I don't necessarily have specifics beyond that, but we would begin immediately.
All right, thank you so much. Did you want to add anything?
Yes, please. The vegetative buffer, we will put that for future maintenance under an operation and maintenance manual, so that we can monitor, you know, we'll be back out every five years to make sure it's being maintained properly, so.
And of course, if anyone sees anything that is amiss, a complaint or a query can also be filed with the Planning Department at any time. And, you know, just like everything else, it's one of those things that we, you know, we have very limited funds. We don't have inspectors that are just kind of touring through the county with a logbook. It is really complaint-driven, and that's how it is. And if we want to advocate for having an inspector who's roving around the community, then I think we need to talk to planning and the council for the next budget year, so. But I... It's frustrating to rely on complaints, but we do appreciate everyone's hard work on this, and we appreciate the developer working on this. But let's go ahead and see if the petitioner or petitioner's representative wishes to speak. Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Oh, there you are.
Yes, my name's Keith Klein with KNS Roll Off, and I was just coming up to see if you had any questions for me moving forward.
Okay, great. And you didn't have anything you wanted to add about this petition in general?
No.
Okay, yeah. It's really, we're just ratifying part of this that was in question, and I appreciate your hard work as well on this. It really helps. Let's see if my colleagues have any questions for the petitioner. Okay, great, thank you so much. All right, let's see if anyone wishes to speak in favor of this petition. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Please come to the podium in Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Okay. Come back and see if there are further comments or questions from my colleagues. Commissioner Githens, Commissioner Jones? Okay, great. With that, I'm going to call for a vote on the ratification of ordinance 2024-04. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero. Thank you all. Next item, please.
Move approval of Harrowfish Inc. Curry Building IT Room Air Conditioner Replacement. Fund name cumulative capital. Fund number 1138 in an amount of $10,540.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Mr. Kreider joining us. Don't worry.
Yeah, please.
It'll eventually work.
This request is to approve the proposal submitted by Asia... ...Commissioner, in the IT room at the Curry Building. This project is necessary to protect server equipment. The scope of work includes removing portions of the current defunct system, installation of a new Mitsubishi Mini Split System, line sets, cables, and controls, and the use of a lift truck to move the equipment to and from the roof.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
I think this is important for protecting the servers.
Yeah.
Sure is.
Vital. Thank you for getting this addressed so quickly, appreciate that. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Harrowfish Inc. contract for the Curry Building IT Room Air Conditioner Replacement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero. Thank you, and next item.
Move approval of Nature's Way Inc. Gordon Pike Roundabout. Fund name county general. Fund number 1,000 in an amount of $12,525.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Tell us all about, please.
This request is to approve... $525 to provide landscaping maintenance services at the Gordon Pike Roundabout for the 2024 spring-through-fall season. The scope of work includes spring cleanup, fertilization, and mulching, monthly weed control and plant maintenance, fall cleanup and fertilization. It also includes irrigation maintenance, including limited repair work, backflow device testing, and winterizing.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
Well, we were down at Bachelor Middle School on Monday talking about phase... The next phase of the Gordon Pike roadway, and I think people generally like the roundabout. It works for many people. It also... To me, it's aesthetically pleasing, so I appreciate this.
Yeah. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, you didn't mention whether or not there are...
Pesticides, herbicides, that kind of thing?
Well, that's a good question. I can tell you that in the other locations at Nature's Way, we have contracts with them. We don't use that, and I don't anticipate that being the case at the Gordon Pike Roundabout either.
Okay, thank you. That would be a particularly sensitive location, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree, and thank you for raising that. If you could make sure that it's followed the way our other contracts are, I think that would be great.
I don't think we need to bring this back because we've worked with them so much on other... Okay, great.
I don't see anything in the contract that indicates that.
Yeah, yeah. All right. And this is just the roundabout itself, not the split islands that lead up to the roundabout, right? This is just that circle?
This is that center circle, yes.
Okay, because one of the things we talked about with area residents, who were the ones who helped design the original roundabout, was what we can do with that little boulevard that's going to need something in it. So I think we might need to have another contract or another discussion with them once we determine what will go in there. And they could probably help us figure out the best things to put in there as well that will need very little maintenance, you know, and that's what we'd like to see, is something that's kind of low to the ground, doesn't impede highway department, doesn't have to be mowed, you know, something...
That doesn't interfere with line sight.
Right, right. So all of those things, so we'll have those discussions probably in the near future.
Yeah, I think we can definitely address that.
Yeah, thank you so much. Great. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Okay, all those in favor of approving the Nature's Way Inc. contract regarding Gordon Pike Roundabout signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries... Motion carries three zero. Thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of Resolution 2024-16, approving Herod'sburg Heritage Day request to use food and beverage tax fund, funds, fund name food and beverage, fund number 4936, and an amount, and the amount of $6,000.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I think fund number 4932.
Oh, sorry, did I mistake?
That's okay. No, you're good. All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Purdy?
Yes, I am here. This is a two-part, actually, kind of approach to this in the sense that Mr. Paul Strain from Herod'sburg Heritage Days reached out to your office requesting the use of food and beverage funds. So in my mind, I see you have to approve kind of whether or not you want to do that, and then the second part would be approving the resolution, which would be allowing you to take it to the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Council, requesting their recommendation. There's been change in the statute, and so now you just get, obtain their recommendation. So that's what this is bringing to you. What they are asking is that they would like an additional $6,000. I think that we had, this should actually read not to exceed $10,000 in this request, and it's for fireworks.
Great. I think we went with the $6,000 figure because that's what they asked for.
Okay.
And I appreciate you bringing this forward, and let's see if there's, is there anyone here from Herod'sburg who wants to speak on this item? Or, oh, I see Mr. Strain is on Teams. There you are. Please open up his mic and let him tell us all about it.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, we can hear you.
I don't know if, Mr. Strain?
Are we on?
Yep. Please tell us about this.
Hi, this is, I'm Paul Strain. I'm president of Herod'sburg Heritage Days. Wanted to make sure you could hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Yeah, we have been in, having a festival in Herod'sburg for a little over 35 years, and we're looking to take our festival to the next level. A festival close to us, Judah Heritage Days in Lawrence County, has closed down, and they always had a wonderful fireworks display. And we're hoping to move that to our Heritage Days on May 18th. And we're just looking for the additional funds to have the fireworks display and the additional security that it's going to take to help put that on.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I, I think this is a wonderful idea. Certainly, Herod'sburg should be celebrating its heritage, and this would certainly help with it. However, I, I find that I'm really not comfortable using food and beverage money for this. Somehow, in my mind, that money is meant more for capital expenses, and I, I'm sorry, and I certainly hope that you can find the money somewhere else if my colleagues happen to agree with me.
Commissioner Githens?
I'm a little concerned about safety and where the show will occur.
Mr. Strain, do you have a site picked out for where the show will occur?
Yes, we have. We've talked to a fireworks provider, and they are actually coming down. I have a meeting with them tomorrow to go over all the safety concerns picked out. One of our neighbors has allowed us to use his field, so there'll be a nice safety buffer from where they're being sent off to where the crowd is. So, yeah, we, we have basically everything lined up. The, the provider takes care of all of the permits, the insurance it takes, fire marshal, everything. It's kind of a, he's kind of a one-stop shop.
Did you have anything to add? Okay. You know, and my, my concerns are a little different because, you know, as, as a, as a child, I always loved going to fireworks displays, and I think it is a, a nice way to attract people, but I think it's horrible for the wildlife and for pets in the area. And so I've become, I've become a real anti-fireworks person because of that. But I think, let's see what the public has to say. Let's see if there's anybody that wants to offer comments on, on Zoom, I'm sorry, on Teams or in the Nat U Hill room. Come to the podium. All right, seeing none. We'll come back, and it sounds like we're going to be a little divided here, so Mr. Cockrell, if you would please call the roll.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Motion is approved, two to one.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioners.
All right, let's.
Do you have an appointment?
We do have an appointment. I was going to say, I think we have one.
Yes, I wish to nominate John Bernstein to serve on the Monroe Fire Protection District Board. This would be an appointment that will run through December 31st of 2025.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and we thank him for his willingness to serve. All those in favor of the appointment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you so much. I do have a couple of quick notes, and give me a moment if you would, but to start with, just a note that all Monroe County offices are going to be closed on Friday, March 29th, for the holiday, and also Monday, April 8th, for the eclipse, to ensure that we're minimizing the number of people who are trying to get around on area roadways. And we will not actually have a meeting next week, which is April 3rd, so a few, those are important items of note. I will also add that early voting does begin on April 9th at Election Operations, which is 302 South Walnut Street. There are COVID tests and available at our health department at 119 West 7th Street, and vaccines, and I think tests are still available at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive. As always, we are accepting applications for our boards and commissions. Go to co.monroe.in.us for more information. We still continue to have our virtual office hours via Teams each month, and if you'd like to speak to one of us, please drop in at the calendar at co.monroe.in.us for dates and times. I know I'm hosting one tomorrow at 7:00, Thursday at 7:00 PM. So hope to see you there if you have questions or you have suggestions for anything we could do. The next blood drive at IB Tech at Shreve Hall will be Thursday, April 4th, from 1:00 to 6:00 PM, and Friday, April 5th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Also want to remind folks to sign up for the Monroe County Alert Notification System. It's a great way to stay safe during storm events, and it will also be a very handy tool to have if you happen to have to be anywhere on April 8th for the eclipse. There will be updates galore available. Just go to co.monroe.in.us, click on the megaphone, and sign up. We are also still accepting applications from low and moderate income Monroe County homeowners who are living in homeowner occupied dwellings that need basic repairs but cannot afford them. Contact your local township trustee. This is a, a program that we developed using American Rescue Plan Act dollars. And a note for folks that this is only for residents outside the city of Bloomington, and for those who live in Perry Township outside the city of Bloomington who need assistance, we ask that you contact our office directly instead of your township trustee. Anything else for the good of the order?
I have two things. I want to remind people that voter registration is available if they're not already registered, and because of the eclipse this year in particular, you can register through noon on April the 9th, the same day that early voting begins. And if you are not comfortable going to the polls for one reason or another, and you meet the criteria specified by state law, you can request an absentee ballot be sent to you. Those requests have to be into the clerk's office by midnight on April the 25th, so that they have time to process them, get the ballot mailed to you, and then you have time to mail the completed ballot back to the clerk's office.
Thank you. Anything else? Should I answer? No. Okay, we do have, I'm sorry?
And it was my understanding we were going to be appointing a board member today. I, we, we had some email exchanges a few weeks ago.
I, I believe, and I, I believe we did notice this for that, today for that.
Yes.
Discussion, so.
And I have the person here, so.
Can we do that at our work session?
I think you could do that at your work session.
Okay, let's, let's make sure we have all.
The ducks in a row, and, and let's do that. Thank you for being here.
Okay, so just let us know.
Just a few, a few minutes, if you don't mind.
Oh, okay.
We do have another work session item. Is that correct, Mr. Cockrell? Yeah, multiple ones. Okay.
Yes, but I, mine can go at the end, that's fine.
Okay, perfect. All right, so let's, let's come back at 11:40.
40, is that okay with everyone? Okay, great. We're gonna.
Give us an extra few minutes. We need to reboot the microphone system.
Okay.
We've lost the Wi-Fi signal, so 11:45.
11:45 would be great. Yes, we'll do that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Crown. Okay, 11:45, and we will come back to Nat U Hill at that time for our work session. Thank you.